I'd like to call the Committee of the Whole meeting in order. Committee of the Whole, today is May 6th. Notice is hereby given to the qualified electors of the Spooner Area School District that a Committee of the Whole meeting will be held at 5:00 PM, May 6th, at the Spooner High School Choir Room located at 801 County Highway A in Spooner. Members of the audience who wish to ask questions and share their insights with the Committee of the Whole, agenda items will be considered by the Board. Please raise your hand and be recognized by the Board President. You are asked to come to the microphone so that everyone can hear your questions or idea. We ask that you keep your comments focused to the agenda item being considered. At this time, I'd like to welcome our two new Board members. I'm honored to welcome Marcia Schers as well as Kate McKinney. Welcome.
Thank you.
We will have a roll call.
Erin Birch.
Here.
Deb Olson.
Here.
Nathaniel Melton.
President.
Robert Holman.
Paul Johnson.
Here.
Kate McKinney.
Here.
Marcia Schers.
Here.
We will now have the approval of the agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
I make that motion.
I'll second.
If a motion in the second, any discussion? All in favor of the agenda as printed, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. At this point, we're going to move on to the Board reorganization. We're going to do the election of the Board Officers. I will go in order from the top. We'll do one at a time and work our way down. The first position is the President, and I would like to nominate Erin Birch as the President of the Board.
Second.
Is there any other nominations? Is there any other nominations? Is there any other nominations, three times? Okay, could we do a roll call vote?
Erin Birch.
Yes.
Deb Olson.
Yes.
Nathaniel Melton.
Yes.
Robert Holman.
Paul Johnson.
Yes.
Kate McKinney.
Yes.
Marcia Schers.
Yes.
Okay, the next position is the Vice President. Do we have a nomination for our Vice President?
I'd like to nominate Deb Olson.
Second.
We have a motion in the second. Do we have any other nominations? Is there any other nominations for Vice President? Third time, any other nominations for Vice President? Could we have a roll call vote?
Erin Birch.
Yes.
Deb Olson.
Yes.
Nathaniel Melton.
Yes.
Robert Holman.
Paul Johnson.
Yes.
Kate McKinney.
Yes.
Marcia Schers.
Yes.
Okay, the next position would be for the Clerk. Do we have any nominations for the Clerk of the Board?
I'd like to nominate Paul.
Second.
Is there any other nominations for Clerk? Any other nominations for Clerk? Third time, any other nominations for Clerk? Could we have a roll call vote?
Erin Birch.
Yes.
Deb Olson.
Yes.
Nathaniel Melton.
Yes.
Robert Holman.
Paul Johnson.
Yes.
Kate McKinney.
Yes.
Marcia Schers.
Yes.
The next position would be the Treasurer. Do we have anyone who wish to nominate someone for the Treasurer? Nominations for Treasurer?
I will nominate Marcia Schers.
I will second that. Do we have any other nominations for Treasurer? Any other nominations for Treasurer? One more time, any other nominations for Treasurer? Could we have a roll call vote?
Erin Birch.
Yes.
Deb Olson.
Yes.
Nathaniel Melton.
Yes.
Robert Holman.
Paul Johnson.
Yes.
Kate McKinney.
Yes.
Marcia Schers.
Yes.
Thank you. Could we have a round of applause for our new officers? Thank you for stepping up, and for our President, I'd like you to come over and take your seat.
Let's get Deb down here, don't. Take your name tag with you.
I'm just taking care of this.
Yeah. It's a burden of the office. There you go, Erin.
Thank you.
All right. Okay. Next agenda item, one time, and then two times. Okay.
Well, thank you, Board, and do the best that I can for the students in our district and for our district as a whole. All right, which I know is our whole entire goal. For our next agenda item, B, and Board Reorganization, I'd like to table that until our next Board meeting when we address the structure of the Committee of the Whole. And we'll continue to move on with presentations. There are no presentations for tonight for student, staff, and community recognitions. So we'll go on to B, Phone and PA System Recommendations.
So this one's going to happen remotely, so Justin will get it cleaned up.
There he is.
He's on the door.
Video even.
Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Not great.
Are we ready to start then?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay, well, thank you for giving me the opportunity to present remotely from the conference that I'm at here. So I'm just going to bring up the slides that we have regarding our recommendation for the phone and paging project that we are looking to do. So I'm just going to share my screen and I'll just run through it quick. So we are looking at a phone and paging system. The paging system is the PA announcements bell systems that work in all buildings. A little background information is that going back to the fall of 2018, the Board gave approval to start looking into pursuing a solution to replace phone and paging systems. From late fall through late winter, we basically looked into researching products and solutions that would be available to meet our communication needs of the district, along with consulting and visiting districts that had either recently upgraded or replaced their phone and paging systems. From that, I developed or we developed our requirements for an integrated phone and paging system that would expand unified messaging, meaning messaging on more than one device, capabilities for day-to-day communication and safety crisis situations. Starting in March, we then put out what was called a request for information to see what types of solutions vendors might propose to us to meet our needs. Based on feedback we got from that, we developed a formal request for proposal that was posted in late March. There were a number of vendors that expressed interest in the project. And when that RFP became due at the mid-April, we had two vendors that submitted responses or proposals. That was Heartland Business Systems and Mosaic Telecom. Those proposals were then looked at by a district team that consisted of our tech office staff, myself and two others, building teachers, two office staff, one from the district office and one from the building offices, and a guidance counselor. And that team then, after looking at things, developed the recommendation that I will show you here in a moment. Before we get to that though, I just want to touch base on what was in that RFP real quickly. The details and specifics, of course, are in the actual RFP. But in a nutshell, we were looking for a solution that would maintain what we currently have for functionality for communication, but at the same time enhance or extend those daily communication features to our routine operations as well as our safety in crisis situations. But more importantly, integrate together in such a way that we could extend our communications past the phone in the classroom, or the speaker in the gym, or the classroom or office to mobile phones, wireless devices, radios, in other ways, text messaging, message on computer screens and such. In addition to that, we did decide that the systems need to be produced by either Cisco or Mitel, who are the two largest manufacturers of phone systems, and that whatever was proposed in terms of the phone system would have to integrate with that paging system. By the way, we wanted to make sure this was well understood. It's a turnkey solution, meaning that the vendor would be doing the installing, providing the training, and initial and ongoing support for this type of system. From that, when it came time to evaluate these proposals, our district team looked at a number of factors, but we really had our focus looking at how things would be used by the end users, looking at the types of phones, speakers, things like that that they would be using, also looking at how the features that the systems provide would either enhance or extend what or how the different groups were using these systems in their classrooms, offices, and such. Again, with the integration between phone and paging systems for flexibility and reliability, and as I mentioned before, extending that phone paging system past the traditional classroom phone or speaker in the classroom. We also looked at the same criteria essentially through the safety, security lens of the ability to have the ease of sending out messages quickly to all staff or specific groups of staff, and enhancing or improving in managing communication and responses during a crisis situation. Additionally, a couple other things we looked at here or in evaluation was the ability to have room for growth and expansion. The idea is that these systems are getting more and more integrated, the ability to control door access systems, for example, to lock down from a phone or something like that. Of course, we looked at the cost of the proposals in terms of whether they were within our budget to work with and the cost as far as competing proposals. Lastly, we looked at what type of support would be proposed for initial and ongoing operations of these systems. After considering all that, we invited both vendors to present, which they did. They presented comparable and competitive solutions. The cost for both solutions came in well below what we had initially proposed as a budget for this project. After going through all that, the review team unanimously concluded that the Cisco Single Wire solution, which was proposed by Heartland Business Systems, would be the desired solution for this district to move forward with, and Heartland Business Systems' proposal was also the lower-cost proposal of the two with lower recurring support cost. So all that being said, we are bringing forth, you guys consider during your discussion action, making a recommendation to take to the regular Board meeting would be purchase of the Cisco Single Wire solution through Heartland Business Systems. That's really all I have for now. I can answer questions now or wait if you have any questions during the discussion action session. Are you guys still there?
Yes, we're here. Sorry, Hugh. Does anyone have any questions?
Hugh, do we have any, do you have any references of other schools, other businesses, other facilities that have used this Heartland that you've gotten good feedback from? Yes, they're great to work with, easy to work with, that kind of thing?
Well, we ourselves as a district have worked with Heartland before for our network stuff, so they're a very reputable company. I can tell you right now, Chetech School District and Colfax School Districts basically have the identical or exact same type of solution that we would be putting in as far as the phone and paging side of things go. And that...
Thank you.
Are there any other questions?
Could I ask about the ongoing renewing costs? Are we looking at software uploads every year? Are we looking at free for the first couple of years? What is the...
The maintenance renewal costs for everything that would be proposed in this system is included for the first three years, but there would be recurring costs after that, which we currently have been doing on the existing system. Basically, it's like you said, it allows you to get updates and upgrades for the system in terms of software, or the ability to call in for high-level support if there's problems or issues.
And then the other thought would be if something were to happen to this company, is there other vendors that could step in and service our system once Heartland were to install it?
Yes, there would be several vendors that could do that. Partly, the reason for wanting to go with either a Cisco or Mitel solution was that both companies, in terms of the equipment that is produced, are established, they're worldwide, you know, nationwide vendors with networks in place, so there would be other vendors to work with if we ever had to. But I feel very confident and comfortable with the solution that we have as long as it is, I'm hoping that it's the last phone system I ever have to recommend to the Board as far as what we put in place. So we're looking to get seven to 10 years of use on this system the way it's proposed.
Thank you.
Mr. Miller, how much under the initial projected price figure did the quoted price come in?
Considerably less. When we originally looked at this, we were working off of prices in terms, I guess it's more like list pricing, but I was looking, or had estimated a budget of around $220,000 to do everything and install it. And thanks to some competition and things like that, the projects, both proposals came in, in the $180,000 range, the Heartland being the cheaper of the two.
Well, that's good news. Do we have any other questions? And do we have general consensus to move this to the Board at our next meeting?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Miller.
Okay. If you guys have any other questions later in the meeting, Mr. Mayberry is there and he'd be happy to step into my place and answer them if necessary, so.
Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move on to item C, 2019-20 Open Enrollment Applications.
And Ms. Grindell, can you address that?
The open enrollment application period was from February 4th through April 30th. Caitlin has compiled all of the applications that we had received. Now, this is directly tied back to January. If the Board members that were here in January remember that conversation where we set the caps on how many students were allowed into each classroom. So at that time, for the special education and 4K program, and also at the high school level, we didn't allow any, or we had zero spots available. So what this is going to be is a twofold process. Tonight, we're going to ask the Board to either, to deny five open enrollment in applications for the special education and the 4K program. However, after another initial period, and I believe it ends or opens up on June 10, June 7th, we then have created a waitlist. And so if there is room at that time, we will notify those students that are on that waitlist, those families, and then they could be put into that program. So just because it's a no tonight doesn't mean that it's a no for the next school year in totality. So we're looking for a recommendation to approve all open enrollment out applications, to deny the five open enrollment in applications due to no space in the special education program and in the 4K program, and then to approve all other open enrollment in applications. And in total, you know, and I apologize, I did not write that down. Do you remember off the top of your head how many are in?
Total?
Mm-hmm.
About forty-five.
And I think, do we consensus that to move forward to the...
That's what we look for, consensus. Yeah, this to the regular Board meeting.
Is this the time to ask questions?
Oh, yes. Any questions?
My question is, is the thirty-one opting out, is that like an average, or is that...
Those would be thirty-one new, oh, the number was on there? I didn't catch that. There, that would be thirty-one new ones that would be opting out for this year. So we have the base of about a hundred and, I think about a hundred and twenty maybe that we've had previously.
Yeah.
Okay, that was my question. Is this considerably lower than the...
It's about a dozen fewer than sought to open and roll out a year ago.
I'm sorry. I, okay, I get it now.
Thank you.
The other thing about opening rolling out is just because we approved this, they still could show up in the fall and say we decided not to open and roll, we decided to come back.
Yep.
Or do these districts have to take them, or do they, is that just kind of the...
They have policies and procedures in their district, just like we do.
Okay.
Any other questions? Do we have general consensus to move this to the next Board meeting?
Yes.
Yes.
Yep.
Okay. And we're going to move on to item D, 2020-2021 School Calendar. And Mr. Ham, if you could come up.
I put a summary in your Board packet. Just to summarize, we had a committee of seventeen people with representation from each building and each employee group in the district on the calendar committee. We met three times. We developed three draft calendars. Those drafts were developed based on staff input received from committee members, or through the committee members from their colleagues, discussions about what we felt was best for students, and also a survey that was sent out to the entire staff to gather input from everyone. After gathering that input, we developed three drafts, calendars, sent the draft, three drafts out to staff for a vote. The top two, the way it works, were tied at like forty-one point four percent. So what we did to break the tie was we eliminated the third, sent the top two calendars back out, and that's what you have in your package, is that the voting between the two. It was still fairly close, but based on that voting, I would recommend that you approve calendar number three, which was the calendar that received more votes.
Is there anyone with questions, concerns?
Last day of school would be June 10th on this one, is that correct? So the difference between start and finish from the two calendars is start the same time, but one ends earlier and one ends later?
Correct. One of them has a spring break and one of them doesn't. The one that didn't have the spring break also had professional development days during that week of Thanksgiving on Monday and Tuesday. So students wouldn't have been in, but staff would have been in on Monday and Tuesday on the other calendar.
And this calendar, they're not, they're not here Monday and Tuesday?
This calendar that we're recommending is finishing on June 10th. Staff and students being out the whole week of Thanksgiving, and also being out for a spring break, March 22nd through the 26th.
Okay. And then, I have one more question. Sorry. There's two, there's two days on this calendar, number three, that are marked as early release or late start days.
Yes.
So is that something that's, we're going back to, or did we do that before? How is that, how is that working?
Something the committee was asked to schedule for this year is a trial run, one morning, one morning late start, one early release in the afternoon to get some additional professional development for staff.
Okay.
I think that's something we can see how the community responds to that and then make a decision the following year, whether we want to continue that or not.
Okay.
Thank you. And thanks for heading up that committee.
You're welcome.
Do we have general consensus to move this calendar choice to the full Board at our next Board meeting? Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Item E, Consider District Health Insurance. And Mrs. Grindell, if you could address that?
Good news for the 1920 fiscal year. We have been accepted into the CISA XI Co-op for insurance, which means that our premiums as a district are going to go down about fifteen percent for staff. It's largely the same plan. There's some slight differences with prescription coverage, but we will address those with staff in the large group meetings that we have scheduled. But overall, we're looking at fifteen percent reduction in the premium, so a single premium being ninety-seven fifty-eight per month, and the family premium of two-twenty fifty-three per month. Overall, district-wide savings is right around three hundred and fifteen thousand dollars.
Thank you. Are there any questions?
What, what happens to the, both the individual and family deductions with this new plan, or deductibles, I should say?
They went down slightly as well. So the single went down about five hundred dollars, and the family went down a thousand dollars. So we're at a thirty-five hundred, seven thousand. We're going down to a three thousand, six thousand.
Are we passing the same savings to our employees, so if it was a fifteen percent less for the district, are they getting fifteen percent less also?
That's reflected in the premium. So that savings is reflected into that dollar premium. Previous, previous premiums per month were for, or current, what we have right now, for a single is a hundred and fourteen dollars, and then for a family, it's two hundred and sixty dollars. So there's a reduction. That's where the reduction and the savings are passed on.
And when does the transition take place?
July 1st is our renewal. Yep.
Well, this is really, really good news. I mean, we talked about this last year and wanted this to happen, and it wasn't an option, so it's very exciting that it is this year.
Yes.
Do we have general consensus to move this to the next meeting?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Item G, I'm sorry, F, is to consider the girls' soccer co-op.
Mr. Lucius.
Mr. Lucius?
Evening, everybody. Consideration tonight is girls' soccer co-op. Like most of the WIA co-ops, it's a two-year co-op. The year the co-op is up this year. A little background information, when we started this two years ago, we had one young lady that played from Shell Lake. This year, we have no young ladies from Shell Lake playing for us. And in the near future, with conversations with Coach Kupura, and him having conversations with the Northland Badger Youth Soccer Association, there are many girls from Shell Lake in the U-12 to U-18 range. So basically, what that means is there's no girls from Shell Lake to help our co-op up. So moving forward, what we'd like to do is go to a standalone program where it is just Spooner by itself. And the rationale and the reasoning behind it is you can't have a co-op if you're not having help from another school. So that's kind of the background and the rationale. Administration's recommendation is to have standalone for a girl's soccer. Any questions?
So you, tonight, you're seeking consensus from the Board because to not renew the co-op takes no action on the part of the Spooner Board.
No action, I'm sorry. It's no action by the Board. Basically, an administrator signs off, because we're not starting a new one, we're not continuing, we're not doing anything. We're basically going back into tournament play. So it's just an administrator signature. So just consensus.
Okay. If it comes up again in the future that there are players that want to join, is that an option?
Yes. I've been here a long time. We've been in and out of different co-ops with Shell Lake, depending upon availability of athletes and things like that. And yeah, for girls' soccer in the next few years, you know, we may have to look elsewhere for another district or another school that has the ability to give us more girls to help out our program. Or if, like you said, if something were to happen and Shell Lake comes back and all of a sudden a family moves in with five girls from nine through twelve, and you know, it's going to help our, help our co-op up, yes, we could go back to it.
And so we don't have to, we don't have to wait that two-year term?
No.
Okay. Okay.
Are there any other questions? Do we have general consensus then to end the co-op?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item G is to select a Board delegate to attend the CISA XI Annual Convention in Turtle Lake on June 3rd, 2019. Do we have any volunteers, first of all? Are you interested in going as President? I've done it for two years now, so I'd be okay if someone else would like to do that. Anyone's interested? It's informational and it's, it's a good, very informative event to attend, and you get a very good understanding of CISA XI and our, sort of their structure and how they run their, how they do their job and their role within school districts. Anybody interested in that?
I think one of our new members should go. I'd like to leave it open.
Would you be willing to do that? Okay. So do we need to make a motion in a second, or is it just...
We just need to identify the person, correct?
Okay. Thank you, Marcia.
Thank you, Marcia, very much.
Thank you for sending me. All right, we're moving on to H then, to consider the physical therapy services. Mr. Ham, please.
All right. Our physical therapy contract is coming up at the end of the year, so we sent out a request for proposal to ensure that everybody in the area had an opportunity to send a proposal to us. We received three proposals. One of them was not from the area, it was from Roosevelt, New Jersey. We also received one from Marshfield Clinic, Rice Lake, and Spooner and Hayward Physical Therapy and Wellness. Recommendation would be to go or continue... Recommendation would be to go or continue our contract and enter a two-year, another additional two-year contract for twenty, nineteen, twenty, twenty, twenty-one school years. And everything just kind of came together. It was the most cost-effective proposal, it's also somebody in the local community and somebody that we've worked with that we've been satisfied with the services, so that would be the basis for the recommendation.
That makes it easy. Are there any questions?
Can I just ask, how does this compare with the current contract? Is there an increase, decrease, are we doing?
It's a little bit different this time because it's a monthly proposal based on monthly instead of an hourly. I think it will be less costly for us because of the fact that it's all-inclusive, and otherwise the mileage, the travel time, consultation, all of those things are kind of variable. So this takes it and it won't be variable anymore, we'll be able to plan for two years knowing exactly what our fee will be each month. Also, if we have a number of kids move into the district, that still stays constant. Obviously, we could have somebody move out too, and it would, but our numbers have been growing instead of shrinking, so I think it's a benefit for us.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have general consensus to move this recommendation to the next board meeting?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. And I, PLC Plan Presentation from Dr. Aslan.
A month ago, I was up here and shared the concept of professional learning communities, and I know that we have had some feedback from some of you on the, on the book as well and some really good questions that have come in. Now I want to take this to the next level and give you a little bit more specific information about what our plan is as we go at this for the upcoming school year, and also talk about costs a little bit. So the overview, we'll talk a little bit about the, the plan phases because it is a twelve-month-plus-long plan as we look at our first formal foray as a district into this. We'll talk about the actions in each of the phases, and we'll talk about cost estimates. Phase one is about learning, planning, and leading. It kicks off the summer of two thousand and nineteen, and it begins at the Professional Learning Community Institute where eleven teachers and administrators will be together on June twenty-fourth through twenty-sixth in Minneapolis, Minnesota. And this is a gathering that has some of the biggest names in the field of education under one roof. So it is an outstanding opportunity for a broad-based group of Spooner Area School District educators to learn about professional learning community, also some time for us to come together and synthesize our plans that will be developed both at the district and at the, at the building level. You know, at this point, we are working to develop and refine district and building-specific PLC structures and practices. Phase two is about rollout and staff training. This will take place August through September, two thousand and nineteen. At this time, we would roll out the district and building-specific plans that will be developed after the summer PLC Institute, but before the start of the school year. We will, we'll look to bring a solution tree associate into the Spooner Area School District to work with the staff during that in-service week. We'll, we'll look to adopt the Professional Learning Community Toolkit, and I have to say, this is really a one-stop shop for all of our internal learning needs and for us to build our capacity as a district and in the building teams in the area of Professional Learning Communities. The estimated cost of this phase is between ten and twelve thousand dollars, and these costs, as well as the costs I'll outline in other phases, would be paid for out of the curriculum budget for the upcoming fiscal year, and there's money available for this. Phase three, implementation, takes place October two thousand and nineteen through June two thousand and twenty. In this, we'll work to monit, we'll implement our plans, ongoing monitoring and adjusting of district and building plans as we go. This will be the first time that we've done this at this level. So we don't know, we don't know yet, but we know that we'll have good plans going in, and we know like any good plan, it requires monitoring and adjusting along the way based on the lessons learned. Training and implementation of the Global Professional Development Library will be an important piece of this, and again, a one-stop shop for great learning and information for building-level teams. Anyone in the district can have this information, and it'll be incredibly valuable. We'll also look to have interactive web conferencing and coaching taking place at the building level and at the district level. We would look to bring us, our assigned solution tree associate back into the district for a day, mid-year for a professional development day, and the estimated cost of this phase would be about twenty thousand dollars.
That would come out of the curriculum too?
That would come out, yes, that would come out of the curriculum budget as well. Phase four of the plan is assessing, training, and revising. That would take place about a year from now and going through the following summer, May through August of two thousand and twenty. At that point, we'd formally assess our PLC structures and practices at the district level and in the building level. We would send, we would look to send another group of eleven teachers and administrators, leaders of the PLC movement, to the PLC Institute in the summer of two thousand and twenty so we can build that cadre of trained leaders, and we'd revise building and district PLC structures and practices. So in summary, as we look at the implementation of professional learning communities here in the Spooner Area School District, it builds on our established structures and successes. We have a lot to be proud of in this district, and a lot of great work has happened, and what we're looking to do is take that work to the next level through the PLC process. It's research-based and also based on current best practices, and there, there's just a great body of research out there. There's also a great body of schools and districts that have implemented this successfully. So it's important that we don't recreate the wheel when we don't need to. Let's use somebody else's wheel, let's take the learning that's out there and look to use that to take our programming to the next level. There's just a great depth of support and resources available. This will be new for us, and anything new is hard and takes a lot of work upfront, so it's important that we have the resources and the support through the coaching process and the different libraries that are available to us so that we can meet the information and learning needs so we can build that internal capacity, because that's what we're working towards. Development and sustainment are very important. We'll work to develop these plans, and we'll look to have that support to sustain the, the practices that we're successful with, and to go through the development phase to build on those areas that we, we realize that we'll need to plus up as we work this program in the future. And in the end, I'd say this to you, your district's mission is, we're preparing each student for a successful future. I see the adoption of the PLC implementation plan as doing just that. While not inexpensive, we have the funds to cover it, we have the motivated individuals in our district that want to be part of this, and the teams to make, to see this through to fruition. In the end, this is an investment. It's not just spending thirty or thirty-five thousand dollars, it's an investment in our students. So I'm going to encourage you to, to consider what I've talked about this afternoon and hoping to come back to the board at the, at the regular board meeting in the month May and get approval to make a commitment to those, those pieces that we'll look to put in place for next year. Questions, me. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have general consensus to move this to our next regular board meeting in May?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. And how many of you were able to read the book? Did everyone get a chance to read through that? No? Well, if you read it, and if you get a chance, it's, it's very exciting, I think, to read through that and to see that there are districts that had ninety-two percent free and reduced lunch qualification, their poverty rate was so high, and they were able to turn around their academic achievement in a matter of just short time. I think that often, we as a district go back to that, and it's kind of this thing that weighs on us, but that there's a method that's proven and a means to get there, and staff that I know are willing to meet needs for students, and given the tools that they need, I think we'll do an awesome job adopting this and implementing it. It's just an exciting time to see that this could really do really great things for students in Spooner, so I'm excited that this is a path we're going down. Thank you, Dr. Aslan, for the presentation and information.
I have one more question. Is, when we implement this and when it comes to fruition to the way that we want to do it, is this going to be something that will carry on the district going forward then for what I am assuming, years and years? This will be a new practice that will stay and sustain here? Is that correct?
We look next year to build, to build on the multi-tiered system of support framework that we have, this is just a piece of it. So it's just the next evolution in what's been a multi-year process that will continue many years into the future.
And then, is there a way that we can get some additional information too, or, or find some more information to read about this? Because I think it's, I think it's really important that we have a, a clear grasp of what's happening throughout the district, and this book was a phenomenal piece to that. And I think if we have avenues that we can look at more additional information, I think that would also help.
And I think more information will come available over time, and we certainly will look to share that out on a broad-based level.
Okay, great, thank you.
All right, we're moving on then to discussion and action, school community relations section of our meeting. Thirty, sixty, ninety-day planning cycle is the only item that appears on this agenda.
An exciting month, we have graduation coming up, couple of graduations coming up.
Do you want to come to the mic, please, Mr. Scherz? Thank you.
High school, last week, it really started our run. We had National Honor Society, I got to attend that, and FFA banquet, and this week is just as busy. We've got, as we mentioned, the concert at the end of the week, conferences tomorrow, graduation the twenty-fourth, and a whole lot of other activities that I don't have memorized right now, but those are the highlights.
Thank you. Are there any others to share? Thank you.
So at the middle school, excuse me, this week is middle school week, so we have a series of dress-up days and fun activities for kids. It's also Teacher Appreciation Week, so we're actually doing Staff Appreciation Week, and we've had a group of parents step up and plan everything, and it's been amazing so far, so thank you to them. And then also, on Tuesday, the twenty-first, from five to seven-thirty, we have our Summer Jam, which is our end-of-year art show and music program, and all the grade levels have displays down their hallways, so that's what we have going on.
Thank you.
I have one more item I took, forgot here. So we have our senior awards next Wednesday is during the day, I believe it's one-thirty to three-thirty.
Okay. Is that going to be, was it broadcasted live last year?
I think it was, wasn't it?
I couldn't speak to that.
I thought it was.
I think it was because I couldn't come and, and I think I was watching it as I was working.
We'll see what Hugh can do.
Yeah, Mr. Mayberry, you know anything about that?
Okay, thank you.
We love to attend that.
Yeah, come on.
All right, welcome to the room. At the elementary school, I know on the ninth, we've got our concert here, should be exciting. Going to be interesting turnover from us to the high school, I know that's going to be a quick turnaround. And then the tenth, we've got our muffins with moms. I know that's a PTA-sponsored event, but should, should bring in a lot of individuals as well. And then a number of different field trips coming up, and then we've got some track and field events set for June fifth and sixth, so get more information for you guys in the future date.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just in the ath, well, athletics kind of realm, we have our big fundraiser that we've been doing for many years now, the Drive One Event, which is this Friday, which is basically, we get twenty dollars for each test drive that we can have students, eighteen-year-old students or adults, take. We're hooked up together with Ford Motor Company and Link Sotomayor, and that'll be running out here in the high school parking lot from nine to five on Fri, this Friday, the tenth. And then just, I know the big graduation for the high school, but the Alt High School graduation is also on May twenty-second at seven o'clock up in the auditorium, so thanks.
Thank you very much. Okay. Discussion, discuss, discussion and action for the Personnel Committee, our first item is the twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one school calendar, we've already addressed that in bringing it forward to the May regular board meeting, as well as the delegate to CISA. Thanks again, Marsha. We'll keep moving on to our budgets, budget buildings and grounds. The first is the Referendum Facilities Committee update.
Okay, I'll give, give a little update here. So the Referendum Facilities Committee met at five PM on April twenty-third in the High School Media Center. Committee members received a welcome, background information, and committee scope of work information from district leaders. Luke Schultz of CISA XI provided a committee overview and general timeline events for the committee's work and on the proposed referendum initiative. Lisa Voison of RW Baird presented on referendum fundamentals, Spooner School District financial information, and hypothetical tax implement, implications of a referendum based on total dollar amount of referendum projects that may take place. Committee meets next, tomorrow, five o'clock in the Spooner Elementary School Media Center. And Deb Wilson, do you have anything to add?
No, I just, when we went through everything, I think there was a really good turnout. I think the people that were there and that are on the committee are committed to, you know, doing the best we can for that, and it was explained in a really good way so that people would understand mill rates and things like that. And so I'm just excited to finish the process here and see where it goes.
And remember, those are all on the district website, which is great, and I recommend watching them if you have questions or concerns. Okay, we'll keep moving on to the item B, the phone PA system recommendation, which has already been addressed. Are there any other questions on that? Okay. C, consider district health insurance has been addressed and will be on the next board meeting. The same with our open enrollment applications and physical therapy services. Financial update, Mrs. Grundell.
The March financial statement was put in the board docs. As you can see, we had a starting balance of about five point nine million. We took in some food service revenue, some special education revenue, our per pupil aid was paid. We had receipts totaling roughly six hundred, or I'm sorry, income coming in was about six hundred and ninety-one thousand, vouchers going out was about one point six million, so leaving an ending balance for March at about four point nine million.
Thank you. Questions on that? Approval of vouchers, those on the Budget Committee, were you able to look those over?
Yes.
Good. Nathaniel's the only representative, so thank you, Nathaniel. We'll move that to the regular May board meeting. If we continue down seven, we don't have anything for the Policy Committee, our Curriculum Committee, consider the girls soccer co-op has been addressed as well. And our last item is to reflect on the committee of the whole meeting.
I was, I would say the, as we move forward, I think that the committee as a whole turned, was a good experiment, and I hope that with new board members on, that they can appreciate that we've done some things to make it a little more convenient for the board. convenient for the board and the people. I think that, um, today's meeting went really well. I think the, um, one thing I have seen is that up on the top here, when we do presentations, if we move forward, we may not even have to repeat them the second time. Once it's been recommended to the next board, there's no sense in even putting it on the agenda. It's either gonna get your knee at the top.
I agree.
Sure. Thank you.
Which then, I guess, and I, is it, it's fine to talk about now, I think, because this is our, but moving forward, we're going to be addressing the structure of this committee, and I don't know, because that portion about our points of committee contact, I don't know how valuable that is if we address all of it at one point in the agenda. So maybe that's something that we think about between now and the next meeting. What are your feelings on whether or not we need committee heads to be taking in agenda items and being in charge of our different committees, since we're all hearing the same information, and it's all on one agenda, if we do consolidate to that. Um, another thing I'd like you to think about is potentially changing the time start for the committee of the whole to six o'clock for consistency across the board with both of our meetings. Um, so, and that can be decided on at the next meeting, but just if you would think on that, those issues. Anything else?
I, I agree with you as far as the, we don't, if we move forward with the committee as a whole, I see no need for, I agree with you, there's no need for, uh, individual heads or committee members. We're all one when we come to this meeting.
Okay. Good. All right. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion that we adjourn.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
The meeting is adjourned.
Great. Good job.
Good. That's good.
How about you?
You better slow it down.
Thank you.
You better slow it down, or are you, you're making it worth your while.
And so I just need your signature right under Aaron, so we can leave room for Marsha's name, too.
Um, not really here, my day.
Well?
Not for you.
So far, so good?
Not for you.
I leave once a morning for South Dakota. Try something new out.
Um.
I think they're Marion's, but I'm not sure. I thought that would be pretty cool.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think it'd be real cool, so I'm, I'm, I'm not a doctor for days.
Enjoy yourself.
Yeah, you do. You go fishing and all?
I think it's a different kid, because I saw the same thing to him. I agree. But it's a different name, that's it. I don't want to say his first name, but it's, it's a different family.
I haven't even bought my license.